All right. So our audio is ready and our, so we are here for our work session this evening. It's January 18th at 6:30 and because this is an audio recording, we'll go around and introduce ourselves so that our listeners know who each of us are.
Senator Schmitz.
Chair Lynn.
Judy Kelleher.
David Anderson.
David Anderson.
Robin Richards.
Kathy Lewis.
Hi Kathy.
And our guests this evening are, can you guys please introduce yourselves?
Sure. Ken Dragseth.
Lisa Anderson.
You're muted Tony.
Antoinette Johns.
David Klop.
All right, well, thank you all and so the purpose, the, for tonight's work session is the review of the superintendent's search process and the guests that you were introduced to is from School Exec Connects team and they're the team that we did an RFI on and, and then selected to help us with our superintendent's search process. So with that, I think we're just going to hand it right over to you guys.
Okay. Thank you, Board Chair. Again, my name is Ken Dragseth and we're going to tonight go through a series of steps that we will need to take in order to get the search process underway and I think you got a planning document that we're going to work off of. And on the front page of that document is a, an agenda.
Are we supposed to have one?
I think I said it to you Judy, do you have it?
Is it this thing?
That he gave us?
I sent an email to you this weekend.
Oh, no.
Oh, I did, I don't think I saw that. And if you did send it over the weekend, my son was getting married, so I wasn't checking emails, so I don't.
I was going to ask, how did that go?
It went great.
Did they say yes?
Yes, they did.
Did you send it to all the board members?
Uh, I don't.
Did he send it to Deanna maybe?
See...
I didn't see it.
That I have one.
I sent it to your board address.
Hmm, I'm on that email and I'm not seeing it here.
Okay. Hold on and I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, that'll be good, just hold on. Well, why don't you, you guys, you know, Lisa, David and Tony, go ahead and introduce yourselves and maybe you can, David, why don't you talk a little bit about our company just briefly David, so I have a sense of where that is and then I'll...
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm Dave Klop. I'm one of the founding partners of our firm. The firm started back in Illinois in 2003. I've done too many searches to count on, to count and a lot of them in the Chicago area, but recent years, many of them here in Minnesota. Our firm is, we have 60 consultants in our firm. We are mainly a Midwest located firm, but we all do national searches. We have consultants throughout Illinois, Wisconsin, Ohio, Michigan, Missouri, Indiana. In those states, we've done a lot of our work. I believe our firm has done, Ken or Tony, you may have to help me, but we're like nearing 700 searches in the last, just about 20 years.
Ken, if you just want to email that to me, I've got somebody here that can print it off for the board.
I did, I sent it to you Judy just a minute ago.
Okay.
So if it comes up.
All right.
If you pay me, I'll follow you around and print your stuff out for you Judy.
Can I ask what email address you have there?
Okay, I have Judy.Kelleher. A second, I want to make sure I got that right. Well, I want to do it again.
Yeah, it's Judy.Kelleher@ISD194.org.
All right, let me resend it.
Terry got a haircut.
Yeah, don't stop talking about it. That was last week.
You're looking good here Terry.
Yeah.
You like my new baldness?
Yeah, I'm going to try and emulate you.
My new razor that my wife got me, my palm razor is good.
All right, I'm sending it on.
Steph, I'm wondering if they should just send it to you.
Is Deanna there?
What, Steph, what's your email address? Can you send that to Stephanie Cass?
Okay, just a second, I'll, I can. Okay, and email again is?
At ISD194.org.
All right, it's been sent, so.
And Steph, when you get it, can you please forward it to Kathy as well? Well, can you, are you able to just share it and show it on the screen?
Um, just a second.
Oh, Steph got it.
All right, great, great.
Yeah, I forwarded it also, so maybe between...
David, you, I don't know David.
Yeah, between the two of us, glad it got through.
But while she's printing all of that off, is there some, can we just start with talking about it?
Sure, I'll just finish up quickly. We, Ken, maybe you want to pick it up from here in terms of how many searches we've done in Minnesota?
Well, so we're good with that, that's, we got all that when we did the RFI, so what I'd like you to just do is start with actual process and the timeline.
Yes, all right, so, and the first thing we're going to do is do an overview of the process and Tony's going to do that and that'll give you a sense of what the bigger picture is of the process.
Yep, thank you.
And, and as I go, first of all, I want to thank you on behalf of all of us for selecting us to do this search. We're really pleased to be working with you once again. We, as we go through what the steps of the process are, I will tell you what we will be focusing on tonight in order to make some decisions that we need in order to implement the process. Though first of all, we're holding this planning meeting, which is the first step in organizing everything for the entire search timeline, the process that we'll use, advertising, et cetera. The first step that we do after we have this planning meeting is to work with you to set up community engagement and the community engagement is critical in order to develop the new superintendent profile. And that includes gathering input from focus groups and an online survey. Tonight, we will want to set up what the, who the focus groups will be and who individual interviews will be with and what we will do during those focus groups and online survey and, and then create the profile. The profile, we will come back to you to get your approval on and to get you to actually give us any modifications or changes that you may want because sometimes things, sometimes we don't have it worded exactly as it fits your district and the vocabulary that you use, et cetera, or some of the values that you want expressed in it that are critical as you, as we search for the new superintendent. So we bring it to you, you have it in advance to review, we seek input from you and then we create the final document and that we would get your approval on. The next thing that, it becomes our responsibility then to implement your advertisement list and make sure that every place you want it advertised, we're doing so to recruit and gather candidates. And then we are known for recruiting and we make a huge effort at that, working through all of our, our consultants, working on all of the connections that everyone has and as well as looking at who applies. And we will also talk to you tonight about internal versus external candidates and process in that search for candidates. We will interview all candidates and we will definitely do a very in-depth background check on them as far as checking references, people that they've given us and people that we know know them. We tell them that we will be talking to people that they didn't give us as references. Then we move to presenting a list of candidates to you and that could be anywhere from four to seven candidates that we would come to you on an evening and say, this is who we have selected out of those that applied and those we recruited and ask you to accept or modify that slate. And then the next step would be preparation for the board interviews and the first round board interviews are just you, the board, and during that time, the questions, it's very structured this time in the first round. So every candidate gets asked the same questions in the same order, et cetera. Then we ask you to select down to two or three finalists, usually it's three. And then in order to do that, we go back to you and talk with you in the process about having focus group people and individual people meet with the candidates, the three finalists. Each one comes back for a day of their own in the district. So Candidate A would come one day, Candidate B the second day and Candidate C the third day. And every one of them meets with the same groups and is asked questions by them. We provide a feedback sheet, which is copied or sent to you electronically quite frequently now, sent to you so that you can review that during the day or when you come into the meeting on that, the end of the day that each candidate is there, you'll have time to look at the information provided to you and sit and listen to them as they participate in what we would expect would be a community meeting where anybody can ask them questions. It's a good opportunity for you to see how they interact with people and think on their feet. Then after you've held the third day interview that you hold each evening with the candidate, at the end of the third candidate's interview, then we help you to select it down to a final individual that you would want to enter into contract negotiations with. So that's kind of succinctly giving you the process and all the steps that we'll go through. Tonight, we will set up with you the calendar dates for every one of these sessions, we will set up with you the focus groups and we will work with you on advertising and some other points along the way.
All right, so can I just stop for a minute? We have three board members that have not been through this process before. Do you guys have any questions about the process?
When you say the focus groups are, and you said you're finding them online, is that what you said?
There's two, two ways to gather input for this profile. One is with focus groups and individual meetings. The focus groups, we will want to set up with you tonight, but an example is, one focus group could be students, one could be teachers, one could be at your cabinet level, and then there's other groups that we'll talk about. Individually, we often, we meet with this on phone or Zoom or in person with board members, often with the superintendent, sometimes with the union leadership. So that's one way of gathering input for this. The other way is to do an online survey and that we'll talk about in depth and anybody in the community can go to that link that we will work with the administrative staff to put on your website so that they can go there and fill out the form. It takes them less than 10 minutes. And we'll talk about that more in depth.
Yeah, and that's what we did last time. We had the small, very targeted focus, or not small, but targeted focus groups, but then we also did a, a survey that was open to all the community members to do what they wanted to do.
Okay, and the survey is online?
That, yes. And we just, you know, we got, Cass got this all printed out and Ken, I finally did get your email.
Oh, well, good, okay.
We're all set now, so we've got the documents and then Kathy, it was emailed to Kathy, so we're all set here on our end.
And that online survey is through Survey Monkey?
Yep.
If you're familiar with it in other ways.
Through Survey Monkey.
I have two questions for you.
So are there any other questions?
I have two questions. One, we're currently on, in the strategic planning process and I'm wondering, you know, I'm concerned about survey fatigue because we just had, we're right this last week have been giving the surveys to students, to parents, to staff for strategic planning and so, you know, how do you address that survey fatigue and is there any way that you can use the results from the, the strategic planning to help inform this process as well? That's my first question, then I'll have another one in a little bit.
All right, well, first of all, if you share with us what your questions are in the strategic plan, then we can better address whether we could use that data versus us going in and having a different survey or maybe a modified survey with just a couple questions. It's also one that, yes, we do ask students, parents, community administrators, anyone that wants to can go on and fill it out. So we would want to talk with you about what your survey looks like and how you're reporting it back to the community and how you would want us to use that information versus the questions that we will ask. And we'll, we'll share with you later on the questions we would ask, there's just five.
Excellent, yeah, I just want that on all of our radar to not overdo the work, to make sure we're getting the best results and that, you know, the community piece will be important for any stakeholders that are, do not have students in the schools because they were not involved with the strategic planning.
Okay, okay.
They are, they were. They are, oh, all right, yeah.
I misspoke, I'm on day 15 of swearing in, so I get a lot of, a lot of slack.
It's district wide.
My second question is, when we're conducting the first round of interviews, have you ever had people from the focus groups or any other members to, to do like a rubric scoring as well while they're hearing that or is that just the board?
Well, can I just hold off a minute? So it, that, I think we have those discussions specifically when we get down into the details of each step. I just want to know if anybody has any quick, any other questions about the overall process? We, hang on to that one. Because that, because we'll be getting into all the details about how to do those pieces as we get into those elements.
Can I just ask real quick what the parentheses, like under April 5th, April 6th?
Yeah.
We're going to get to that timeline too, so.
We'll get into it for you.
Again, just a real quick question, they did a very high level overview of the process. Does anybody have any questions about the high level process? That they just ran through?
Not yet.
Okay, okay, so now, now we've got the documents in front of us and I know you're going to get into the details of each of those segments and then that's where Robin's question and Dave's question will come in.
Okay. Dave Klop is going to do number three, the board administrative liaison process and number four, the interview.
Yeah, just, we, we like to have kind of a key board member contact, I would say most frequently as the board president or chair, but it doesn't have to be. And we're not talking about making any high level decisions without the rest of the board, but just to kind of expedite the process. And then we also ask to have an administrative liaison that we can work with and then frequently that might be the administrative assistant to the board or the superintendent. That person we depend on a lot for setting up focus groups, if we're doing the focus groups in person, setting up room arrangements, et cetera. So if you are ready and could let us know who those key contacts would be, Judy, would it be you for the board or would it be someone else on the board?
Yeah, we usually do the board chair.
I would definitely say board chair.
Okay, and, and then...
Extra $50 a month.
Yeah, that's why I get paid that 50 bucks a month.
That extra.
The extra. And then this, the administrative liaison definitely would be Deanna.
Okay.
She's very good, but I think she's going to quit.
You're going to need to pull that forward.
She's very good, but I think she's going to quit.
Yep, go ahead Kathy.
I totally agree with Deanna, but would also it be important to have Steph involved?
Well, Steph is sitting in here listening, but just as a point of contact, that's who they're asking for right now and that would be Deanna.
All right, perfect, I agree.
Yep.
Next, number four, we would just be talking about who we would, first of all, who we would have individual interviews with. As Tony went over.
It's on page four.
Yeah, we're on, we're on page four, number four. So we generally have interviews with the, each of the individual board members. And if you could look quickly up to page three, on all of our focus groups, all of our individual interviews, those are the five questions that we ask. What are the most important goals for the district to achieve, the greatest strengths, the greatest challenges or barriers, importance characteristics or skills for the next superintendent? And then we do ask what questions you'd like the board to ask. Then on the, so whether we're doing our individual calls with you or we're doing focus groups, those are the questions that we go through. Then we need to find out who you would like us to do individual interviews with beside the six board members. You can see there, frequently boards will have us interview the outgoing superintendent, some don't, but most do. The teacher union president frequently is one who would get an individual interview and any others that you think would be important for us to, rather than have them in a focus group, have an individual interview with them.
So, so I, question I have about that, do you guys, I don't know if you guys have the timeline and the process that we did the last time we worked with you, but did we have you do individual interviews with our executive cabinet members?
At that time, I don't think we did. I think we did a focus group, if I remember correctly. But we, we can do that if, if you...
I think, I think that's important to do it individually.
You know, I might, at this point though, maybe a representative or two from the district because they're going to be in a focus group anyway.
Right, right.
Yeah, they're going to be in a focus group.
Right, but they have to work with the superintendent and I want...
You're not hearing me, I'm saying, what you're doing is you're asking these people, these six questions to get input and then when you, then later, there's the whole focus group and it could be the district office, it could be teachers, it could be business leaders, those are the focus groups where they, they, they actually work with the candidate or hear the candidates.
Yeah, but I guess my question is, did, I was just asking if we had the executive cab, members, those four?
Yeah.
If they were part of a focus group or individual interviews and he just said, he thought they were part of a focus group.
They were part of a focus group, but I was saying, maybe we should have one or two of them as part of the interviews, just to show...
The individual interviews?
Yeah, not the interv, no, this inter, yeah.
Yeah.
I think they all should be interviewed.
Well, you can't...
There's only four more to, I mean, it's...
Yeah, you can do that, except you're, you're, you're lopsiding the interviews.
Yeah.
You're going to have one unit, you're going to have one teacher rep and you're going to have four district office people.
Yeah.
If that's what you want, that's fine.
Well, they have to work directly with the superintendent.
Yeah, but they'll, they can have their own focus groups so that all four of them are together in one group.
That's true, that's true, that's true.
Right, that's what I was trying to say.
Yeah, so...
Do we want to fight now or?
No, so we're, so we're, we're good, is there, is there anybody else so that, yep, Kathy, you can just speak up, we can hear you.
Well, some of you kind of cut out or not and, and so I didn't hear everything. So basically, you're going to have the four top administrators in one focus group, is that what I heard?
Yeah.
That's what we did the last time, that's what I was asking.
And my question, okay, so because I don't know procedures well as you do Judy, is that, that's a closed interview for those people? Okay, good.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
What did he ask?
If it was a closed interview.
Closed with just the cabinet?
With the administrators, yep. So now I guess back to their question, is there anybody else that we, besides the ones they've listed here, that we feel there should be individual interviews with?
You know, I recently was able to work with them because of the new board member interviews and, you know, Renee Lett has a really robust perspective and she's also going to be, you know, leaving and I think that that would be a really good perspective to have. Who was that, sorry?
He's one of the four.
She'll be here through this process though, she, she's the executive cabinet.
Yeah, but I'm saying that that's who I'm putting in as a suggestion for an individual person from the executive.
She is one of the four.
I, I think we already agreed though that the executive cabinet was going to just do the focus group.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Terry won, I lost.
No.
So we'll do the individual board members?
So let me just recap here to make sure that I understood this correctly.
Okay.
I thought I heard that we were looking to see if there were any other individual interviews and, and rightly so with Terry's concern about not lopsiting the individual interviews with too much administration, we'll go back to what we did last time around and do our executive cabinet members as a focus group. And to Dave's question, it is, none of these are public groups, the, I mean, at least with the administration and stuff.
And that'll streamline and cut time, I'm good.
Is that good?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, and so then Renee will be part of that group because she's still here then at that time. To Robin's concern, Kathy, did you, were you saying something?
No, I'm just trying to follow, thank you.
Are you hearing us okay or are we still cutting out?
No, I'm hearing you okay now.
Okay.
As far as others designated by the board, would there be any way to have like a parent teacher, you know, president or, I'm just wondering what would be, first of all, the question is, do we want to have another person as part of those individual interviews other than us as the board? Definitely Michael, right, are we agreeing on that?
Right.
Yes, absolutely.
The teacher union president? And then we're on number four, others designated by the board.
I'm wondering if, I'm wondering if we should have some type of a group with the principals?
We will.
We will, so that's, so that's the focus group. So at this point, I think, should we talk about the focus groups too and then maybe have a conversation around the two of them together? So why don't we go into the focus groups and share a little bit about what those focus groups look like?
The other thing I would like to say is I know that, I think it was Robin that said about the union president, but... about the union president, but wouldn't it be wiser to have him as part of a focus group because we also have the custodians, we also have leaf, I mean, we have different union groups, and I would think rather than trying to interview with each of them individually, it would be better to have them also grouped together as a focus group. Otherwise, you're going to have to, I think, to be fair, you're going to have to conduct an interview with each of our labor groups.
Good point.
So I-
David, I wanted to just give some examples and then-
Yeah, so let's move into the discussion around the focus groups and see where that leads us.
Just quickly Kathy, we just did that in a search that we just finished, they did choose to have their various union leaders together in a focus group. So we, we can do that, certainly. But, so we would recommend focus groups with your executive cabinet, as we've already Are there other district office administrators that would go into a separate focus group?
I, I would think so. I, I think we should. I think that might be where Steph, our communications, we have somebody from-
Building, yeah.
Yeah.
Food service?
Sure.
Community ed?
Yeah, so I would-
Food service?
Yep.
Okay. Community ed?
Yes.
So any other district administrator?
I think we should have somewhere where we get Lydia and her group somehow.
The equity?
Yep.
Well, then we're going to have to start including other advisory committees, and then we should-
Well, that's not-
I'm not doing it for advisory committees, I'm doing it for their positions that they hold in the administration.
Their department, not, not the advisory.
I'm not doing it for committees.
Oh, okay.
I'm not, let me put it this way, I'm not suggesting it for committee advisory groups, they can be part of the whole community kind of mix. I'm talking about the-
The department.
Administrative leaders of certain departments.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Okay.
So, so we have a second district administrative group, those people are not in the executive cabinet, would be in another focus group.
Exactly.
Correct.
That's, that would be my thought.
Yeah. So that, we'd have the executive cabinet, we'd have the district office administrators representing other departments.
Yep.
Then building administrators, principals focus group, I would presume.
Yep.
Could, could be assistants too.
Yeah. Could be principals and assistant principals.
Yeah, the deans.
So do you do, do you do like all of this, the building administrators, certified staff, non-staff, you do all of these in one focus group?
No.
All of these are various-
They're all separate. They're all separate.
Okay.
Each one's a separate group.
Yeah.
So we have building administration, then Dave, go ahead.
Yeah. Assuming you would want a certified staff group, teacher group. And frequently districts, it will involve the union president in helping to select that group, that, it's a way you can do it, but you don't have to. Assuming you would also want a non-certified staff group?
Yes, absolutely.
Then a parent leader group?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I, I like the idea of having union leadership assist with developing who is in the focus group, but I don't think it should be limited to that. I think that we should, I think we should definitely allow some people to be a part of that group or to have some kind of connection who he or she would not necessarily promote. In other words, I just don't want the, the executive union council or whatever of each union, because I hear different things from our different union groups with different opinions, and I don't want it to get stacked in one particular way for one particular point of view, if that makes sense. And if it's possible to manage that, I would like to have divergent voices out of each of, of those groups, if possible.
I agree with Kathy.
How many buildings you have in the district?
Oh, my gosh.
13.
13.
13. I mean, you could, we have had districts where there's been a teacher from each building, and the principal has been involved in that, and then you could have an additional, say-
I want like a special ed teacher involved too from the buildings and-
Yeah. Well, I think, yes, you could, you know, we'd probably be working with Deanna and setting those up, but we could make sure there were the different, you know, we don't necessarily need 13 English teachers, but-
Exactly.
We can get a variety of teachers, some from each building, and then perhaps ask the union to put maybe three teachers that they would recommend.
I would be in favor like that, because I'm just, I'm a little leery of maybe getting, and for lack of a better phrase here, the union negotiating team.
Sure.
The ones that are doing it. I, I would like a little bit more of a diverse voice, and some of our unions have quite a wide range. I mean, we've got early childhood, Dave mentioned, special ed. All of those are kind of like, they're individual departments, but they aren't.
Yeah.
So I want to make sure that we get as much of a diverse voice as we possibly can that's, that's reasonable.
I think working with Deanna and Stephanie, we can, we can get that figured out.
Okay.
Can you know, with that, to really try to get both tenured and, you know, like a probationary staff voice would be a really, I think advantageous as well.
Great. Yeah, and on the elementary level, it's not just classroom teachers, look at specialists, the art teacher, the STEM teacher, FIAID, that kind of things too.
Sure.
One of the things we like to remind everybody is that if we do an online survey, everybody in the district has an opportunity.
Yep.
Has an opportunity.
Right, you know, and so if they're not in a focus group, doesn't mean they don't have input.
Correct.
Granted.
Correct. Did you, did you hear that, Sinta?
Not hearing.
Just, yeah, we had trouble hearing that one. Just be, if they're not selected to be in a focus group, everybody has the opportunity to conduct the survey, so all voices will have the opportunity to be heard. So, okay, right now we're talking about the building administrators, certified staff, non-certified staff, so we're up to students?
Students, in most districts, we will do a high school student group and a middle school student group.
Now, you've got two high schools, so-
Right.
Actually, three.
We have our ALC and we have our online, we have our online too, so.
Yeah. We can, yeah, we can do a single group or we can do, you know, when we were in Eastern Carver County, Ken, I believe, we did a student group at Chanhas and then another one at Chaska.
Yeah, and then we included the area learning center, you know, that we paired-
Right.
So we ran two groups, focused each of the buildings.
Can you speak into the computer? You need to speak into your microphone better, Ken, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to get up here, is that better?
Yep.
All right. What David just said, he said we, we went and we could go to both high schools and we could include, you know, the students from each of those high schools, but they also, we included, like the area learning center group was with one of the high schools, they had a, an online group like you do that, you know, that are virtually, virtually, and they were at the other high school. So we had two groups, we included the four different groups.
Okay, that, that would be good.
Middle school, how many middle schools are there?
Three.
Three.
Three. What do you think, Ken, would we do a group in each school or try to bring the kids together into one focus group?
You know, we, it, it varies, because in some districts we have not done middle schools, you know, we've done-
Right, yeah, you don't necessarily have to do middle school kids.
We could do the middle schools into two, we have the two high schools, we have the one middle school that splits to the two high schools. So we could, we could align, we could kind of line it by middle school-
Boundaries.
High school boundaries for the middle schools.
High school boundaries for middle schools.
That idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would eliminate, Ken would as a separate group, they were combined with the other two.
Yeah, Ken, but would be combined, or we just provide two dates for the middle schools and let them attend whichever one works.
Let them assign.
Yes.
Self-assign.
I like that idea of being able to give them options of which one to come in.
Just schedule the two days.
And have it, you know, in online format, so it's super accessible for everybody.
Yep.
That works.
Parent leaders, do you have a district parent group that meets?
We used to.
Yeah, we, we used to pre-COVID. Steph, do you know if they're really meeting too much anymore?
No, we've been, you know, I think about our referendum campaigns, we really primarily work through the PTO presidents.
Yeah.
Or other interests through those groups, that the PTO president kind of-
We-
So what she is, so what she's, what Steph is saying is that we don't have our district PTO group like we used to have, but we have PTOs at all of our buildings and have our PTO presidents that can-
Not the high schools.
We could do PTO presidents.
We could do PTO presidents.
The high schools have parent organizations too.
Is that called PTO?
Well, it's not called PTO, but they have the parent groups.
Same thing with the middle school, they have a parent groups, but I don't know that they're PTOs anymore either.
Right.
No, but whatever.
It's more of an elementary.
We have the parent groups.
Yeah, the parent groups, but-
Well, let's have the president or the chair of each of the various school parent groups as a focus group.
That would work.
That should work.
Is there any way, I think you may have mentioned this, but is there any way to do any outreach to our early ed groups? We have a fairly robust early, early, early ed and the pre-K.
Yeah.
And I think, I'd like to see a way that we can reach out to them, and it may not end up being necessary, but that is one of our most robust groups in general, at least for previous COVID. And a lot of, a lot of things that happen there are what really draws a lot of community support for us. And the other reason why I think it is so important is those pre-K parents, they're going to be our elementary parents for our new elementary that's opening in Fall of '24, and they're also going to be the ones that are going to be the drivers for the next elementary after that. And, and then we've got a middle school that we're going to be thinking about by '30. And so I'm, I'm just thinking if there's a way to somehow tap into those groups, and hopefully with our strategic plan, we're reaching them. But I want to make sure that there's some kind of a voice if possible.
Yeah, Kathy, we did mention, we did mention that when we were talking about the building office administrators, I think they mentioned community ed and early childhood.
And there's also a parent, there's an ECFE parent advisory, I know as well.
Yeah.
So when we do the PTOs or whatever they're labeled, let's also make sure that the Crystal Lake Center is included with that parent advisory representative.
And we should also look for early childhood, special ed representation.
Yes, absolutely.
Different run program usually.
Okay.
So as we're doing that, I think maybe when we're doing that, the, I don't know if it's the parent leaders or the community leaders, but we are now kind of tapping into some of the leaders within our advisory committees, so-
I was going to say that.
Yeah, so I think, and, you know, like Dave said, if we're going to tap into one, we need to tap into all of the advisory committees. So we may need to find a parent rep from each of those advisory committees and-
Judy's right, because there's certain advisory committees that-
Talking to the microphones, Kathy, can you hear?
There's certain advisory committees that have really dedicated parents that like go all the time, like ours, CAC meets every month, you know.
I think most of them have pretty dedicated parents.
Okay. Are you just trying to make me look bad today?
I'm just, I'm just thinking of all the committees.
They all do, so it, we get a, if we got the, a representative from each of our advisory committees, that could maybe be its own-
Sufficient, yeah.
Committee group.
Right.
I, I just don't want somebody that shows up like for once or twice a year, you know, because there's people that show up all the, like, three quarters of the year, you know.
Advisory committee group. Or, I, they're advisory councils, I should say, so advisory council focus group. And we'll just get like a leader from each one of them.
That makes sense.
That, that sounds good.
You've got a different perspective there because your, your PTO, your PTO parents are more, they're not into the curriculum or into the special ed, they're into getting their building. They have a different perspective than the people in the advisory groups.
Yep.
Any others?
Okay, then, so as far as parent leaders, I think we're good, but then we're to community leaders, and that's where our chamber, um-
You have to go to the city also.
And we have to tap into all of our city groups, whether it's Alco, New Market, well, now we have Credit River, all, all of those different groups.
So if we put a community leaders group, then we'll just work with Deanna to, or whoever, to identify those people.
That would be great.
Yeah, because we, like Kathy-
Yeah, with the townships and-
Yeah, we've got, yeah, we've got township councils groups, we've got chambers, we've got the city, two chambers that we're dealing with, so, yep.
Anything we'd missed, do you think?
Anybody else think of anything we've missed?
Um, is it possible, although I think the survey may take care of this, just to do something in general that, that would encompass anyone who we haven't included? So in other words, we have a significant population now of people who don't have kids in school.
Kathy, we talked about that, that's the big mass survey that we'll do, so that if you're not able to be part of these, everybody still has the opportunity to do a big survey.
Okay, and we need to make sure it gets out to them, because many of them aren't connected to the district, so to speak, I mean, they don't get the Lakeville online.
If you look, if you look at letter C, right down below where we've been working, we do recommend there be an open meeting, it can be community staff members. Usually we would have these in a, usually at an evening, late afternoon or early evening time, and it, it is kind of the catch-all group.
Okay, that's fine.
So, but I think to Kathy's point, Kathy, you weren't necessarily talking about the survey as much as how are you going to get the information to these people?
Both, both.
Well, we're doing the survey, so it's, it's about how to get it to make sure everybody has access to it or access to the information about the open meeting. Is that what you're talking about?
I'm talking about getting both of it out, I mean, you know, I mean, what do we, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Of course, I assume that-
But Steph, you're going to work, you're going to work with them to come up with the communication, because you, you like help our advisory, and you're really good at that.
We will, yeah, typically the district would, you, you send information to everybody who votes in your district or your, you know, whatever process you use, we'll work with you on that.
Perfect, thank you.
And just to make sure the surveys will be available in other languages?
Yes.
Yeah, Tony, I'm going to turn it to Tony to talk about the survey.
Yeah, it's been confirmed by our communications director that we will be offering them in languages just like everything from the district.
I, our survey goes online, we have it currently available in about seven or eight languages. I did look at your student demographics, and the largest student population you have is Hispanic. And so I would assume that you'd probably want me to put the survey up in Spanish.
Yep.
And English, and then that survey would, we can report the feedback to you first under the English, and then if we get responses in the other languages, we would give you a abbreviated report from that. We usually get very few responses in our other languages. That, we asked the same question- That, we ask the same questions on the survey that we ask when we're meeting with people in person. Or on Zoom. And, and, um, and when it's translated, it's been translated with the same questions.
Can I just make a comment there or a question, Madam Chair?
Yes, yes. Yes, recorder, Anderson.
I don't know if I like that yet. All right. For the special ed kids, just don't assume that they're going to be able to, I have one, don't assume they're going to be able to give you feedback. So you need to make, because I had one mom that, she went and checked her kid's email, she had like 800 emails in there. He, he would never check them, so don't assume with the special ed students, you need to include the parent in a lot of situations there.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're, um.
I didn't say old people, so I would get in trouble.
What is it?
We also, um, on the survey, when it's online, we have some prompts. So for the, every question, we have some ideas that they can click on and choose. Like, um, whether you think are the best things in the district, and they can say the, um, 21st century curriculum, for example, they could choose. They could choose, um, arts athletics as one of the best things in the district that they're, that, um, is in your, is being provided by you. But then every single question also has a box where they can freely respond. And what we've learned is that they, that box expands until they're done talking. And we've had some very, very lengthy responses in that. So, so they get an opportunity, when you're with a group of people in a focus group, what Lisa says may stimulate something that David thinks about that. But when you're alone sitting in front of a survey, those, um, prompts there help to stimulate your thinking. And you can choose to use just them or go ahead and add something in the box. And it's available for every single one of our questions.
I, I really appreciate that because as you said, when you're in a group, some, something that somebody says may stimulate another thought. However, many times when you're in a group, you also feel you get shut down.
Yes.
And so this would offer opportunities for people who might have more opinions and might be a little bit more forthcoming than they might be in a group.
Well, we've also, we always tell people when we're in, with them in a group, if you didn't get to offer up your ideas today, go online. We always encourage people to go online and fill out the survey as well.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I agree with you, Kathy, because there's such a difference, like my wife likes to do writing and I like to, when there's a group.
Yep. Robin, I can't even remember what your question is, but now we were talking about the survey. Will you ask your question again that I forgot, around the rubics or something?
Well, my question is more when there's the interview. If there is an, if you, you go about, and I, I want to save it if we're going to get there in a little bit.
I, I think, I think we are.
And it specifically is interviewing this, when we're interviewing the superintendent.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm, my question. So I'll hold on to it still.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was thinking it was around the survey. So, all right, thank you. So we'll, we'll continue on. So does anybody have any questions? We're going to do the individual interviews and did I understand it correctly? We're removing the teacher union president from the individual interviews and we're going to just do a focus group of our union leaders?
Yes.
I would prefer that.
Okay.
Say it again, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, my ADD was.
That we're removing the teacher union president from an individual interview and doing a union leader group?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is it, all right, so, um, so then we have our individual interviews, we have lots of focus groups. But I will tell you, the focus groups, I remember when you did those the last time, that information that came from those were so valuable. So I know we have a lot of them, but they.
And I got a lot of good feedback from people.
They were so engaged.
Appreciated being involved, really.
And that was probably the number one piece about this process that the community really appreciated the last time. And then we've got the catch-all open meeting and the catch-all general survey monkey survey.
Excuse me, but I do want to know for sure in that survey piece, which languages you want? If you want something more than Spanish.
Yeah, Steph, Steph and Deanna, you can work with them and they'll, Steph will be able to tell you what we're going to want them in. So we'll get that to you. So Steph made a note of it, she's our communication director and she's here and she made a note of it.
This, this may sound, um, a little off, but because we had an experience about a year, year and a half ago, when we were looking at our policies, do you ever have any concerns or is there anything expressed that may be questions that you ask in the surveys, um, online or whatever, are not necessarily, um, um, always appropriate or inviting for our, uh, populations that, um, are equity-based? I mean, everybody's equity-based, but you know what I mean? We found out with reviewing some of our policies that we thought were great, that when they were reviewed by our, um, equity team, that there was a whole different flavor of how they interpreted what we thought was just perfect.
Kathy, the questions that they said that they ask are on its, the prior page, are those questions that they ask?
Yeah, but I just want to make sure that, that it looks great to me.
Oh, I see, you're asking if these questions have ever, um, been interpreted differently.
Yes, thank you, that's a better way of putting it.
Got it.
We, we, all we, I guess what I would say is that our experience with all the districts have been very diverse. We just went through an interview, 287, and they did intense work on equity.
Okay.
Used the same questions because they felt that they got at the issues in the district.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, how you interpret the answers, you know, is up to you.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Yep, okay, thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
I wasn't exactly sure what your question was, thank you. All right, so I think we're through the, um, feedback gathering components.
Yep.
So, um.
Lisa's going to take us through the search calendar and that's the, uh, page.
Five.
The next page.
Five.
Yep.
Five.
Five. All right. So if you look at the search calendar, um, it starts off with today, the 18th, a meeting with the, with the board to establish this process. And then we'll move to, um, the important part of this and why we want to establish this calendar is so you can put this on your website and you can start communicating all of these right away, right? So we'll, by January 21st, that's Friday, we'll go ahead and put that stakeholder letter, the search calendar, everything on the website. So we'll be working with Deanna and Stephanie to kind of get that up by Friday. The link to the online feedback survey that we've been talking about, we'll want to at least have two weeks on that. So if we can get that on Friday, the 21st, and that'll be open until February 4th. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah, I think so.
Then the next big one is, um, next week already, we'll have, um, the board interviews and the superintendent interviews. If we can go ahead and work with Deanna on setting up those individual interviews.
Kathy, I know you're going to be, so for.
We'd like to do focus groups.
Can I, can, one clarification that we'll need to know on the focus groups that we didn't talk about is, do you want these to be, uh, like virtual Zoom interviews or do you want them to be in person? I'll go back to the individual interviews. Typically, most districts now, what we've done on the individual interviews is to call people. And we just set up a time where you're available, like say a board member. It can be any time that you're available and we would just call and have that conversation with you. With the, so we can do that. I think that's the best way to deal with the individual interviews in terms of how to get ahold of you. In the focus groups, uh, we need to think about, with all the stuff going on right now in the next couple of weeks, whether we want to set those up in a virtual format or, or do we, do you want us to come down to Lakeville and sit, you know, face-to-face with these people? And I guess we would like, you know, we're asking your input on that.
Yeah, thanks, Ken, because we didn't talk about that.
As far as the individual board members, um, I think it's probably easiest for us to just to take a phone call. And.
It's not we don't, it's not that we don't like you.
Yeah.
No, no, not that we don't like you either, but.
It's just a lot more logistically, yeah.
All right, yeah, but I'm, I worry a little bit about focus groups not being virtual because we, I've done virtual meetings and.
I think it might.
Maybe a combination.
We might have to take a look at the focus groups and see how many we have in each one. Because like if we do the focus group with our executive cabinet, that's an easy one to do online via Zoom. But, um, and even maybe, um, our, just, even our, maybe even our principals and stuff. But at some point, some of these groups may be too large to make it tough. And a lot of the community members just may not be comfortable and it may be more difficult to manage the Zoom or the virtual.
I just want to offer that, you know, when I was, this fall, part of the strategic planning focus group, it was over 30 people and they were able to break us out into breakout sessions.
Did they do it online?
It was all online over Zoom. And so continuing that, I mean, that's obviously been a precedent that's, you know, was set forward. And just given, you know, the situation that we're in right now and with illness and quarantine and wanting to make sure we're respectful of that timeline. And to be quite honest with you, the commute with a Zoom meeting is really enjoyable for, for the majority of people. And I was very pleasantly surprised because, you know, I was engaging in this. I'd never been on a cold call Zoom like that, in that format. And especially with the breakout sessions, when you get to groups over, um, you know, over 10 people, we were able to, to engage, like with, the facilitator helped us to be able to, to get all the information out. So my question would be like, what would be the number that you guys would have for a Zoom focus group?
Typically, it's, it's, it's probably no more than 15.
Yeah.
Only because if you get too many, then people will feel like it's worthless because they didn't get a chance to.
They'll turn off.
Right.
Well, and, and to that.
15 is typical.
To that point, if we do have any groups that are larger than that, we could just do two focus groups for that.
Right.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And then the open meeting could be in person.
Yeah, we'll work with, with Deanna and we'll set those up to make sure that we, that there's.
And what I was interjecting is that to have that open meeting, I mean, that obviously says virtually or in person. I think that would be really advantageous, given our community, to offer both, um, to make sure.
That's what we kind of did for our seat meeting the other night, we had a couple of people that.
I was just going to agree with you on the online because a lot of the districts advisory committees are back online. For example, teaching and learning is all on, online.
We did like a combo the other night and it worked out nicely, so I think we should, they could discuss it more, I don't, you know.
My, my comment is, is mixed because I, but I think that in the climate of COVID, I want to do what keeps people safe most of all. I just.
Well, so here's, here's the only, oh no, that wouldn't be it either. So I was trying to think to make sure, I mean, all of our students and their families all have access to technology because they've been doing it.
Well, I would hope so because that's the other concern is do they have access to technology?
Right, and so, and so the other piece to that is, so most of our focus groups and all those people would be, um, so.
Well, and then again, the catch-all is that if that open meeting, if we offer that as both.
And it worked out fine, we spread around.
And we are one-to-one, you know, that was, that everybody within the district has a, has a device.
Okay, so if I've heard the board correctly, then we're okay doing all of our focus groups virtually? And then that open catch-all meeting would be done in person with a virtual option to join?
Okay, that's good.
And I think that's a, I think that's a really good, um, choice. We did Eastern Carver County a couple of years ago, like at the, right during COVID, and actually we saw an increase in involvement from our community. Because it is just easier just to jump on a Zoom call, you don't have to worry about community, you don't have to worry about babysitters. You just go in and, and out. And just FYI, I've, um, worked virtually for about, I don't know, a dozen years, so pretty good at running focus groups virtually. And, and all of us have gotten really good at that as well. So being able to kind of pull it out of, of people and, um, you, yeah. Everyone's gotten really good at virtual these days.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to go back to that, but I want to get that resolved.
Yep.
No, I'm glad you did.
Well, and again, the other thing that's nice is then we have this all set up and then we can, you can put it on your website and your communications person can just communicate all these dates and all the links and, and everything. So with that, um, I'm just going to kind of loop back around. So the week of the 24th, which is already next week, does that work for you to do board, individual board interviews and the superintendent interview?
Yes, because it's by phone, so we can just.
It's just by phone, yeah.
We can just get everything scheduled through Deanna.
I get called 20 hours a day, so it doesn't matter.
Okay, perfect.
David will probably be in his car. Kathy, are you going to be able to take it from wherever you're at?
Yeah, um, Monday or Tuesday would be best for me. Wednesday I'll be traveling, Thursday I'll be tied up, Friday would be another good day. So I could probably do Monday, Tuesday, or Friday are the best. The others, it'll be kind of hit and miss.
So what we'll ask Deanna to do is just to schedule it with you and we'll make it work.
Perfect.
Okay.
Right.
We'll make it work, but Monday and Tuesday are really good days.
Yep.
And then the next week, the second and third, is when we were looking at doing those focus groups virtually. The question is, um, so let me kind of go down a little bit and then I'm going to loop back. All of these focus groups and interviews, we're taking all of this data and putting it into that new superintendent profile, which we would like to present to you, the board on February 8th.
Wow.
So that's kind of what's driving.
Your board meeting, that is your board meeting.
Yes.
That is your board meeting, correct?
Yes.
Is it?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that's what's driving these dates. So do you think that you have enough time to communicate these focus groups? That gives us two weeks.
So I, did you, last time, do you present at an official board meeting or do you present at our work session?
Either one will work.
Yeah.
Yeah, I work session.
I'm going to have to take, we're going to have to take a look and see what the scheduling is like for those two meetings because it may be the 8th, otherwise it may be the following Tuesday, which is our work session. What's that date? The 15th, the 15th?
Is it the 15th?
Whatever works.
Yeah, so, and right now I have a hunch that it may be the 15th at our work session.
If it's, if it, if it's on the 15th, does that delay the process? Because I have a real concern about the.
No, because that actually gives them more time to do the number of focus groups they want.
Okay.
Yeah, that will be fun.
Yeah, we start, um, interviewing right away, but yeah, that won't delay things. So if it's the 15th, so the question is, does the second and third still work for focus groups?
I think it should still work for focus groups, but with the number of focus groups that we're doing, you might need to throw another day or two in there.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think that's.
Agreed.
Well, they're going to do it, so. They'll figure it out.
We have four of us, so we could.
We split them off.
Yeah. We can split them sometimes. Well, and especially because we're, we're doing them by Zoom, we can probably be a little more flexible too.
Okay, but yeah, I mean, those dates I think still, still work.
Okay. Okay, great. So then if we do that, then we're looking at that superintendent profile, coming back to the board meeting and having you look at that profile either the February 8th or 15th, you let us know which date. And then candidate recruitment, so then that's a big piece that the, that you as a board is involved in. Then we kind of go into kind of recruitment mode, big time. So what we have here, and I think someone was asking about the parentheses.
I was.
Is we have a couple of different dates here. So, um, one of the options is that we would go through, um, I'm going to jump down to presenting the slate of candidates. The two options are, we would present that slate on April 4th, which again, I think is a board meeting of yours, or, um.
I don't think so.
No, it's not, but.
No, it's a separate night, special one.
No, it's a, that would be, yeah, we'd have to schedule a separate meeting. No, it's a, that would be, yeah, we'd have to schedule a separate meeting.
So if we're looking at this, basically what you have is one timeline and what's in parentheses is a fast, is a faster-paced timeline.
That's correct.
Correct.
Yep. And personally, I, I like the faster-paced timeline. So that we're done before everybody else is out getting superintendents.
Yeah, I'm concerned there's 80 openings this year and there's 40 openings last year. And we want to, we want to get in there early.
Okay, we can just do it faster.
So when are we talking about presenting the profile?
So the profile, we're looking at the February 15th, but the slate of candidates.
Yeah.
So we would recruit then up until March 4th. And then we would present a slate of candidates to you on March 8th.
Perfect, thank you.
So that's that five to seven, and we do a lot of vetting and recruiting and that piece of it. And then we, we present you that slate on March 8th.
I, I appreciate that. And then if anything happens weather-wise or that messes everything up, we would have a few, you know, a little extra time because we're being aggressive on it.
Yeah.
And just to note, that March 8th meeting is our 4:00 PM meeting.
Okay.
What are we saying?
The March 8th, when they're going to present the slate of candidates to the board is at the, is at 4:00 PM.
But those are, these are regular board meetings and we typically always had our superintendent search information presented at our work sessions, which is the third Tuesday of every month, so.
We don't want to delay it in March 8th.
Or you can have a special meeting if you want to.
We'd just add a special meeting.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah.
Do it before the board meeting.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, March.
I'm good with that.
So then if we, if we move to the accelerated, then March 8th is when we would present the candidate pool. Then we'd go ahead and the next night, the next two nights have the board interviews. So we'd have several on the same night. So I think you were asking the questions about questions on this first night. So typically what you do is you identify the same set of 13 or 14 questions and ask each candidate the same questions. And then at the end of that, at the end of the two nights, then you narrow it down from the five to seven into two or three candidates.
Thank you, I have two questions along that. One, do you provide a rubric for scoring the answers? So that we have like a system to be able to dis, you know, to, to determine like the validity of each response?
Well, typically, you know, we, we've done, districts have done both. Majority of our districts have not used a rubric, simply taking notes and, you know, and using your own judgment on that. What we tell the boards is to look at the profile and see how they match up with the profile. So some boards have taken the profile and put a number one to five by each.
I like that.
And then just say, how does this person match up on a one to five basis?
Yeah, I really like that. And then my sec, go ahead. My secondary question is, do you recommend having a search, or excuse me, an interview committee that is composed of any of the focus? I'm seeing a lot of shaking at me.
Not a first round, no.
Nope.
Not for the first round.
Not the first round.
Because isn't it still that those candidates are, they're, they're not identified until they make the finalist?
That's correct, no, they're identified.
They're identified once we, we announce the slate of candidates.
Oh, you are going to, okay, because that's kind of changed from what I've seen in the past.
If, if the board is going to interview them, by Minnesota Data Praxis Act, those names become public as soon as the board approves the slate. And here's how we do it. How, we approve the slate. We'll come in with non-identifying information about each of the candidates. We have to do that. So we'll say, this person is a, you know, superintendent in a northern suburb and he's, he or she's done whatever. And we'll talk about that person in generalities, but we cannot name them, okay?
Okay.
And then we would ask, after we go through all the five to seven candidates, we would ask the board for approval of the slate. If the board approves the slate, now they can remove some if they want to, that's up to them. But whoever, whatever the slate they approve, then those names are public.
Okay.
And then it's the slate that we do the first interviews with. And that we just said that we can have the data that we collected in the profile and we can put numbers next to it to help streamline our conversation afterwards.
Yes.
Excellent.
And you want to, and you want to develop the interview, an interview question for, based upon the profile as well?
And in addition to that, you will be provided, that evening that we present the candidates, you'll be given their resume, about five to eight pages of applications that filled out on our site. You'll be given letters of reference, an introductory letter, their graduate level transcripts, and anything else that they might present. You can use that information in your preparation to also be looking at the profile and seeing how they compare with that. And nobody else has that information because much of it is private data. So is this a time when I can ask questions about private data and what we can share and what we can't share? Because it's my understanding, we cannot share any of that. In fact, we would be giving it back.
Right.
And so that does not go public. Maybe their names are, but we don't share anything. And is it also true, from what I've done recently, is that we should not be accepting or taking email or any kind of conversations or anything like that? Because the public may be interjecting on things that may or may not be valid or distorted. Is that still a true practice to adhere to?
Let me just, let me talk just a couple about the data privacy and so on. Number one, first of all, the board should not be communicating with each other during the process. Because that can be perceived as an illegal board meeting outside of the board meeting.
Yeah.
All right, the second thing related to information from the public, you would treat whatever information you get the same way you treat it now. That's when you don't get in trouble. So if, if people send an email to the board, one board member now, if you send that on to everybody else now, then you should do that in this process. You should not treat the search process any differently as regards to individuals. Now, you're going to get, we've had it in most districts, you're going to get some probably negative kind of thing. You're going to say this person did this. If there's something very serious, then you need to let us know. In other words, if you, if they, they come up with something that they, they feel it's illegal, criminal, whatever.
Very egregious.
We do a tremendous amount of work, we would assume, and that has never happened in a search files. But if it does, we need to know about it and we will immediately take care of it, work with it and do whatever.
Okay. My, my understanding is that also we are not to do any kind of investigating on our own. We are not to be sharing this with, it's, it's not even appropriate to be sharing it with, with others. And that we have to be very cautious about whatever we may receive in email from focus groups or from whatever, other than what you all give us, because it could be very well distorted. I mean, and I've seen a superintendent search that was tried to be, or was kind of skewed because of all the information and emails that came about a particular candidate that, I don't want to say it wasn't accurate, but it was certainly an incredibly biased view.
Yeah.
And it did, it did color the interview process, which I think was very unfair. And it actually worked to the detriment of the candidate, in my mind.
I think, you know, that's where you as board, board members are going to use your discretion. You need to sort through, you know, what you think about that. Again, going back to however you share information, people are going to lobby.
Yeah.
Possibly for particular candidates. You just know that and you just have to, you know, you, the only people hiring this superintendent are you six. That's it. And you can take all the information you want and listen to whatever you want to listen to, but you're the ones who are the decision makers. And, and they're going to lobby you possibly. We don't know that yet, but it's possible. And we can, we'll help in any way we can and that.
Okay, in the situation I'm thinking of, I, I don't, I am not in, at all implying that the candidate encouraged anyone to advocate for themselves or even was really aware of it. But it ended up being very damaging and I think it may have cost them the job.
Yeah.
And not because it was bad stuff, it was because, it was because of the, it was because of the lobbying and, and other people got really turned off by, by it. And that was kind of too bad.
Yeah.
So can I go back to the timeline here? I have a question. So if we have that March 8th date, if we move that to our work session date, which would be March 15th, that would move the first board interviews to the 16th and 17th? And then narrowing our choice down on the 17th? Having the finalist all-day interview process, the 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, which.
Of March?
Yep, so, and so we would still be done by the end of March. So is that a process or a timeline that we could follow?
Because spring break doesn't start until.
The 25th.
The 25th, right.
I think we're trying to avoid some other conflicts.
Yeah, I think that's some conflicts in there, both Tony and David do, so.
Okay.
So I, I, you know, we, we can, if, is, is March 8th a problem in terms of, of the board being able to meet at that date? Or, I know you have a board meeting, but.
You have us on a board meeting and we typically have this reserved to come into our work sessions. But again, I'm not sure if that's going to be necessary or not, but I just, I was wondering if there was flexibility there in case we had to.
I think we're going to run into difficulties with other, other conflicts that have been set up.
Okay. Personally, I, I would like to stick with the.
We could do a work session prior to your board meeting or we could do a work session at the end of your board meeting, if that would work.
Yeah, we could just do a special, so the, the, the problem with the eights is that we've got some caucuses going on with our townships. So we can only meet from four to six. And we've got a board meeting that night, we have to be done by six and we can't meet again until after eight.
How about the seventh?
Yeah, you could do, yeah, we could do another, we could, the seventh is the Monday, we could do it then.
The seventh, the seventh, we currently have four to seven PM strategic planning.
That's the teamwork.
All right, how about the 10th?
Well, no, Kathy, I'm not going to try to figure out a date right now. I'm just wondering if this timeline had any flexibility? And if, if we need to do something here, we're probably going to need to work that out, Steph, before we post any timelines to make sure that it works.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are.
But if both the dates, you could meet on the 9th and then have the interviews on the 10th and 11th.
Yeah, yep, yep. And we'll, we'll figure, we'll figure that out. I just was wondering if we pushed it back a week, so, but we can do a special meeting if we need to in order to do that.
So can we set up, can we set up the timeline now or we have to wait?
Well, I think that, well, the March 9th, I think is what we were just looking at.
Just March 9th.
And then we would do the 10th and the 11th is what they were saying here.
So we're still going to end at 16th.
But I just want to make sure with, because there's been a lot of juggling around with team works and stuff, to make sure that we're not having any conflicts there before. So I want to lock this in with Deanna before we lock it in.
Yeah, it'd be good to get a list from them because.
So we're sticking with. She's getting us an updated list tomorrow. And so I want to make sure this all aligns with that.
We're still sticking to the March 16th.
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent.
I think, yes, I think we're, you want to be done, you know, you want to be competitive timewise.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Okay, so we'll finalize the, this late night and the board interviews night. That's where the conflict is, correct?
Okay.
I have one other question. Forgive me, because I know that the schedule is tight, but do you recommend site visits for the finalists?
You know, I, I've done seven searches, I've never done a site visit.
Okay.
And the reason why, and the site visits were held when we didn't have the internet and Google and everything else. You know.
So true.
The world is so open now that I don't know of any board that we've had in the last five years that is on a site visit.
Good.
And it's a cost savings with the process.
You don't have that obligation. You have to know enough about this person that you decide to take, that should be no problem.
All right, thank you.
And if you, and if you get to the point, you want to do a site visit, we'll set it up.
All right, thank you.
So just for the sake of helping to streamline our scheduling process, we are still looking at the week of that March 8th. And so for all of us as board members to really like have our calendar locked in for that week.
Well, we'll know for sure tomorrow when, when I touch base with Deanna to make sure nothing else is changing with team works and stuff. She'll be sending out all the scheduled dates and align it with Steph.
So we'll know by the end of the day tomorrow for sure to lock it, these in, okay.
Yep, yep, with all of the schedules and all the changes that we've had. Just got to make sure that everything is in sync and I got to check on the agendas for February, so.
Right. Never get to send it to school exec too.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Might be helpful.
You should know too, is once we receive that information, we will revise this document that you have before you, the planning document. And you will get the actual groups that we decided we would do focus groups with. You'll get the individual interviews and you'll get a revised calendar.
Thank you.
That letter will have all the dates filled in. Fantastic.
Lisa, do you want to talk the stakeholder letter then just briefly?
Yes, I did. So let's look at that stakeholder letter, which was on number two. So we'll talk a little bit about, just kind of looking at this. All the dates will be, once we finalize that, we'll finalize all of these dates. And this is something that we'll want to look at and finalize as soon as the calendar is finalized as well. Do you want to take a look at that and see if you have any questions?
So it basically just outlines the process.
Yep, and what we just.
And then tells them how to get it into the survey monkey. And then they can contact us at their discretion if they care to and with phone.
I'd like you to include your phone numbers so they can contact you.
Yeah, I really appreciate that.
And those are cell phone numbers, so we're always available.
Terry's number, you want Terry's number?
I've got.
We want all your numbers. Any questions on the timeline? The one thing I, we forgot to mention is in the, the March 14th, 15th, and 16th, those are pretty identical interviews. It's something that comes to the board interview. So they'll do the same, each candidate would do the same process each day. It's day-long interviews. You'll get feedback from all of those stakeholder groups. And then the board will do the final interviews.
And those, the focus group that we set up to meet with the candidate during each of those days, the board does not attend those. The board would only attend a, either a virtual or an open community meeting in the later in the day. And then obviously, you know, your board, you'll have a board interview that will be face-to-face with the candidate.
And typically you have dinner with the candidate before that.
Yep.
Any questions on these pieces?
So basically, the month of March is.
It's on for you.
And it'll be fall.
And then what I'm also noticing that I'm just clicking this into peace, I was very zoned in on the first board interviews and making sure that our timeline was clear for that. But what I'm also seeing is that dependent on that, looking at that next week, that March 15th or 16th, those as well, make sure that we have open in the evening.
Right.
Yeah, your responsibility is roughly from five or six o'clock in the evening through the final interview.
I just want to point out to the board that March 15th is scheduled to be our work session. And so that would be really nice to have that partnered up with, you know, how they've laid out the timeline with the March dates here. Because the following week, we have quite a bit with another board meeting and strategic planning again.
And if that is a board night, we can do the 14th, 16th, and 17th.
Yep.
We can move those around a little bit. But again, we will want to lock those down.
Yep.
Because when we talk to candidates, we want them to reserve.
Have those dates, yeah, understood.
That's right.
The other piece about why this is so tight is because of what Kathy just said, or what Kathy was talking about. You know, these. what Kathy was talking about. You know, these, you, you want your time between when you announce the slate and when you pick the finalists to be as tight as possible, to resume, to reduce all of that chatter.
Yep.
In the community.
You want to keep the integrity of the search and the process as pure as possible.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yes.
Exactly.
All right. Let me, let me go to the advertising part of it. And that's on page 6 there. We advertise, obviously, we, right away, once we get the schedule set and the stake letter, stakeholder letter goes out on Friday, we're going to advertise its position. We're going to, obviously, on our own website, which hits, you know, goes national, we will put it on the Minnesota Association of School Administrators' site, their job site. We'll put it on the School Board Association's job site. There are other options for the board if you want to go beyond those three. And those all, they're all cost, there is a cost to those. Education Week, which is sort of what I would call the education, the education newspaper of the country, to do a four-week online one, it's roughly $3.95, might have changed after the first year, but it's close to that. And, and then you can do a 2x5 advertisement. I would not advise that. It's very expensive. And it, you can, if you want to get an Education Week, you do an online one, you'll get the same. You'll get actually more people, they, they send it out to all the people who participate in this. The AASA, American Association of School Administrators, that's a national organization. Again, you can do a four-week online there or an eight-week online. And, or you can do an email blast to all the superintendents and assistant superintendents in the organization, over 5,000 people. That's roughly $509 in addition to your four weeks online. And then we have advertised, some districts do this, some don't. We've advertised in the National Alliance of Black School Educators. That's a $250 fee. And then the Association of Latino, Latin, they call Latin American superintendents Latino. Again, 30 days there right now. Last fall, that was $150, so I assume it'll be similar to that. So those are the options. And we will do whatever the board would like us to do. And we will take care of that, obviously, all the advertising and so on that goes with that. So I would, you know, if you have a preference, obviously, we're going to do the first three. Would you like us to do anything additional than the first three?
Can I ask, where do you usually seem to believe most of your candidates come from?
Okay. Well, it's, it's all varied. A lot of them come from their own website. A lot of them come, you know, they're, people, people look at the AASA and MSBA websites. There are job sites there. We do get, if you're looking outside of Minnesota, both Education Week and American Association of School Administrators, those online, those four-week online ones, a lot of districts do those because you reach pretty much all over the country if you want to do that. Some districts choose not to. So that would be the two others that are most common.
Is there a vehicle that would do kind of regionally rather than nationally? Is there, is there something that goes to Wisconsin, Iowa, you know, that kind of thing?
No, there's not. Not, not a organization like that. But what, what I would say, and others can jump in, if they're interested in Minnesota, they are going to go to our site, they're going to go to AASA or MSBA, if they have any interest in it all. When you're, when you go nationally, what you're doing is trying to, someone picked an interest, somebody said, "Yeah, I didn't know that was open," you know. And now that I want, you know, it's open, I'm going to investigate that and, and potentially apply. So we always have, in every one of our searches pretty much, if we do Education Week or AASA or both, we tend to get national applicants. Now, we always say, the national applicants, if they're not familiar with Minnesota and are just looking for a job, we don't really take them too seriously, okay?
But what about those that live outside of Minnesota and looking to come back home?
Right.
I mean, the last superintendent that you found for us was just that.
Yep. Yep. That's correct. Yeah. So I said, that, that's, that's why sometimes, you know, you're roughly talking $800, you know, in the whole process to do a four-week online. And typically, you're going to get, you're going, we're going to get some applicants. You may not see them because we may have, you know, vetted them out and decided that they weren't appropriate to what you're looking for. But there may be some there, too.
I would say that if somebody's from out of state looking to come back in-state, as I was several years ago, these were the websites that I was looking at. I really don't know that it would be necessary to post in the Education Week.
I'm thinking the same thing.
Okay. I'm, we're perfectly fine that. We'll get a pool.
But what about the Association of School Administrators online?
That's national.
That's, that's a little, that is, that goes directly to, to school superintendents and assistant superintendents. So that one's more direct than Education Week is.
So you recommend, you're recommending which one?
Well, if I were to pick the two, I would do AASA.
Right.
Right. That, that's what I'm saying. I'm thinking that the first three that are at no charge, but that just to poke awareness, because, you know, generally, we're looking for a superintendent that somebody's been a superintendent. And so I think the AASA online for four weeks for 400 bucks might be worth it just to see if we poke any bears of people that want to come back home to Minnesota.
Yep.
Yeah, I could live with that. That's...
I mean, that's what I'm thinking.
Me, too.
My concern is having a lot of people apply that don't know Minnesota.
Right. If you don't like it, Terry, you...
Pardon?
Right. So, okay. So I will, we will take care of that. We'll do the first three and we'll do the online four-weeks AASA then.
Okay. I would agree.
And send the bill to Terry for that one.
Yeah, okay. Then, the last thing, and you don't have to make a decision tonight, but the compensation guidelines, what we want for the board to do, to give us, because we ask, what is the salary range? We usually say $10,000 to $20,000 salary range that you're willing to pay the next superintendent. And the reason we do this, and we've never had a superintendent that has been selected by the board turn down a, you know, turn down a contract offer from the board. And the reason, they know what those parameters are. If you can't live with those parameters, then don't, you know, don't apply, basically. You know, so a lot of districts put in about a $20,000 range. And then you have flexibility, depending upon their experience or background, whatever, you know, goes into that. And then when, when we, when candidates will ask, you know, so especially if you're coming back to Minnesota, you haven't been connected to the metro salary structure, and, you know, they're going to ask, so what is it? So is it, you know, is it 200? Is it 220? Is it whatever? 180? Is it whatever number? And I don't, and then we would like to get a copy of your current superintendent's, and we'll get that through Deanna, copy of your current superintendent's contract. Now, we don't share that with the candidates, but it gives us some idea of what kind of fringe benefits you've done, because they ask. And you'll, you'll negotiate, you know, fringe benefits in the contract once you select the person. People's fringe benefits vary depending upon their unique situation. But you, you typically have a fringe benefit package that is similar in compensation value to the next person. Okay. So if you have, you know, I don't know, say $40,000 in, in fringe benefits, then you may do the same. But they, another person may say, "I don't need life, I mean, I don't need health insurance because I got it from another source," or whatever. You don't know that until you sit down and talk to that individual person. So if you can give us that in the next couple of weeks, to, and give it to me, what that compensation range ought to be, that would be very helpful.
You're probably a lot, a lot more, have a lot more information on that than we do. Because you're dealing with the superintendents quite a bit.
Um, you know, we can give you ideas.
I mean, if we come up with...
Your HR person probably has all the superintendents that are in your, what they call your competitive districts.
Okay.
You know, and so typically, they gather that. We just finished a district where they had a whole list of, most of the metro, the metro HR people tend to have a database that they share, as they do compensation for superintendents, assistant superintendents, principals, so on and so on. But if they don't, then we'll figure it out. We'll...
I, I have a concern, and Judy and Terry, you're probably familiar with where I'm going with this. Because when we hired our current superintendent, it was at a very contentious time. And I don't feel that the salary and certainly the benefits were representative of necessarily what should have been paid or was paid. And so I could see where, problematically, that could be coming forward.
Kathy, I, I don't, I think that was maybe back with the prior superintendent. I think Michaels is pretty decent.
You think it's, we've come, we've come up okay on that?
Yeah. No, no, I think Michaels is fine. Michaels is unique, though, because he was a retired lieutenant colonel. He doesn't have health insurance in there because he's getting it through...
That's the type of stuff we did.
But, but it was rolled into, but, but his salary reflects that. So I, I think we're okay there. I, I'm not concerned with that. I don't think...
We just need to make sure it's more, more than board members.
I, I know where you were going, Kathy, but I, I do think that the agreement was pretty good.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we don't get tripped up by that.
Yep.
Dave, needs your key.
Oh. Okay. Then, the only other thing, I just wanted, our process recruiting, we talked a little bit about that already. But we're going to go out now, starting, you know, probably starting next week. We'll have all this stuff posted hopefully by next Monday, once we know the timelines and so on. And we'll go, we'll actively recruit. We'll go and talk to people we know. We'll talk to people that we think would be good, you know, potential. And eventually, we'll match them up with a profile to see if they are. But we, all of us know people and connect that. And we'll get the advertising out and we'll start our process. And that is something that we do, you won't be involved in until we bring you the slate at that time. So if you have candidates, what we would say, if you have people that you think we ought to talk to, because you, you've met them in meetings, or you've seen them work, or you do whatever way it is, you can always let us know privately, either one of us, and we will follow through to see and talk to those candidates. A lot of times, we talk to them and, you know, they're happy where they are. But sometimes, it does trigger saying, "Well, let me take a look at that." You know, that kind of thing.
Do you anticipate internal candidates?
Good question.
Possibly.
I don't know.
Possibly.
Possibly.
It's possible.
It's a slight possible.
We...
We don't really have...
Well, that doesn't mean it won't apply.
We generally recommend that we treat internal candidates like any others. So we would vet them. And if we think they are in the top five, six, or seven, whatever we bring in, we would bring them into you. We do, I mean, we have had districts that say, if you, we have an internal candidate, we want them to get a first-round interview. Now, that can limit your pool somewhat. But we just need to know what your thinking would be on that.
Well, on our last superintendent was an internal candidate. He was treated, the current one, was treated like every other candidate. And none of us said, put him on the list. He just was on the list.
That's what we would recommend.
Yeah. So there, there may be. But I would agree that, that you vet them as you would anyone else.
Okay.
Got it. Great. All right. We've come to end of what we're going to say. So we will, as Tony said earlier, we'll put this planning document, once we get the dates and so on from you, we'll put and revise the planning document. I'll get it back to you as a, a new document so that you'll have a record of all of that. And then we will start working with Deanna and Stephanie to put the focus groups together. We'll start putting advertising together. We'll start putting the survey together, all of, you know, so we're, we will start tomorrow on that process.
Sounds like a plan.
All right. Any other questions from board members? All right.
All right. We'll be in touch.
Well, thank you so much for joining.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah. Thank you so much for your time. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
We do, too. Thank you.
We do, too.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Good night. You're back.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye. All right, Kathy, you sit on. We haven't adjourned.
We haven't adjourned.
Someone's getting eager to leave and we haven't adjourned. All right. So what...
I think I'm the only one left.
Yes, you are.
We need you.
So I, I'll just, I'll make sure that Deanna gets these dates going, just because we have so many date changes and we just got to confirm everything with teamwork's before. I know. So anyway, so we'll get that done. And then I'll get, have her send an email out to everybody with all those dates. And we'll start this process. So if you guys have any questions during this process, you know, please let us know. But we'll get these all locked down so they can be on our calendars.
Yep.
The only other question that I may have, I think goes to Robin, where, Robin, you were asking if the public sat in on any of the interviews. And we said no for the beginning one, for the first, when we do the first six or seven candidates. But, but there is a possibility that they could for the last, when we do the very final ones.
The final three.
Yeah. That's a possibility.
Oh, they did last week.
And we can decide that later. But, but it's not usually for the first six or seven.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
We had quite an audience last time.
In fact, I haven't ever seen it for the first six or seven. So...
Yeah. All right. Well, with that then, it is 8:18. And we are looking for a motion for adjournment. Have a motion by Director Lind.
I'll second.
Second by Director Richards.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everybody.